Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. You ready?
Yeah, let's get started.
Okay.
You gotta minimize that one. Oh.
All right.
Um, we will open up the meeting and gets before we get started with the applications, we'll do a few parts keeping things um then we'll get started, so.
First order of business is the minutes from October twentieth twenty twenty five, there are motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Max.
All second.
By Jamie, all in favor.
All right.
I pose, staying, motions carried, there are two decisions for three oh two Orbalton. First being the variance for six feet to locate the accessory structure three feet from the side property line.
Motion.
Motion for Max.
Set.
Second from Joe, all in favor.
All right.
Pose, staying, motions carried, second for three oh two Orbalton is the variance for fourteen point seven feet for the side total side edge setback of ten point three feet.
Motion.
Max, second by Kelly, all in favor.
All right.
I.
Pose, staying, carried, the next two are for one oh nine Dunham. Denver, the first resolution is seven feet for side edge setback of two feet.
Waiting.
Of Jamie. Second by Joe, all in favor.
All right.
Pose, staying, motions carried, but not least, variance of sixteen point seven feet for a total side edge setback of eight point three feet, one oh nine Dunham.
Motion.
Second by Kelly, all in favor.
All right.
All right. Pose, staying, motions carried. First public hearing. Five oh seven oh Bergenfield, guessing some people are in the audience for this case.
Yes.
Is that correct? I'm gonna read the notice. Notice is hereby given pursuant to section two sixty seven A of the New York State town law that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals of the town of Dewitt, New York, town offices fifty four hundred, Butternut Drive, East Syracuse, New York. Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, at six thirty five P M to consider the application of five zero seven zero Bergenfield LLC, Tara Hunt, received by the Dewitt Town Clerk on October twenty second, two thousand twenty five, concerning the premise is situated at five zero seven zero Bergenfield Way, text and parcel ID zero seven seven dot dash two two dash one six uh dot one. Uh, five zero seven zero Bergenfield LLC owner in a residential zero zoning district. Specific relief requested by the applicant is an area variance twenty five feet to allow for a front yard setback, twenty five feet, to construct a residential structure twenty five feet from the front property line. The Dewitt Town Code, section one ninety two dash eighteen E, requires a front yard setback of no less than fifty feet, and for such additional relief as may be necessary or appropriate, stated November sixth, twenty twenty five. And is Ms. Hunt here?
Yes.
Hello, just before you get started, I I'm going to say that for the purposes of secret, the town is declaring lead agency. Uh, it's a type two action for an area there, it's for a single family, two family or three family residents, and there are no negative environmental impacts associated with those actions. And now the floor is yours.
Um, I've got the architect for Tara Hunt. Uh, for your convenience, I put together um the narrative which I will give to the rest of you. And also I enhance the criteria for the serien variances um for consideration and apologies, we are. One short.
Here, take mine.
Oh, I got it. I need something to. Yeah, well, uh, it's. Uh, this is a one point zero three acre lot in the um. Uh, in the um.
Let me know if you want anything on the screen here and I I will.
Uh, site plan would be, yeah. Um, it has a hundred ninety feet of road fund age, it's one of the uh remaining vacant lots in this subdivision and um. What we have is um between eleven and twenty feet from the front of the property to a level area and then it gets rather steep and continues on, you know. Um, so the neighborhood is made up of um large, single family homes, but able to live three or four car garages um and accessory structures. And um the property, of course, is served by the town sewer and water. It also has storm sewers on the street. This application is to construct a uh single family dwelling that would have about a thirty nine hundred square foot footprint, which includes a three car garage. The depth of the house has been limited to only thirty five feet. Um, whereas a lot of times you'll have wings that run back and you have a much deeper house. Um, the reason for this is to try to limit the how far back we go because the lot falls off quite dramatically. In fact, it falls off um. It falls off um tend to um, uh, let me see, about ten feet um cross slope on it from um higher to lower plus about um, uh, let me see, we have it here. Um. Uh, eight to ten, twelve feet of depth um uh front to back, so um. The, the um, what we wanted to do is pull the house closer to the road um, but so that we're not having to put in a really deep uh foundation to get back to virgin soil. Uh, they do plan on using a ten foot concrete wall, which is higher than usual, but not uncommon, just to help the feet touch the ground as we push back. Um, the um, the front yard um twenty five foot setback is actually to a a ten by five foot stoop in the front, but then uh the remainder of the house, the closest is uh twenty nine and a half, almost thirty feet, thirty one feet for the main body of the house, garage is setback again a little bit, um thirty four feet, so um, the twenty five foot is just for a small portion, but then the rest does step back again as modest as it is. We tried to give it some three dimension, but also um keep it from being pushed off uh into the deep part of the lot. Um. So the um, um. Let me see, the uh where the main house is, we have about an eight foot drop from here to the back area. Again, the house sets up a little bit above the grade, we've got a um first floor elevation that we're uh projecting about six fourteen. Um, whereas we're uh falling back about um eight feet or nine, uh about ten feet from that down to grade, and then of course we have to put a frost wall in the top of that. Um, if we were to push it back uh to the full fifty feet, we'd have to go another five feet deep or fifteen feet uh down, so um that makes it difficult, we'd have to either over excavate, build up a uh foundation for the foundation, or we'd have to put in structural fill. Um, the um spoils that come from um creating the foundation will be used to kind of terrace and level out so that we'll have a couple terraces of backyard to the main backyard before it falls off again. Um, the um. Uh, we have um uh pushed the garage to the high side here. Um, we have kept uh enough maneuverability so that we can uh back out and pull out, we've put the entrance more where the existing entrance is and we've kind of centered it on the house rather than directly into the garage. And uh we may have to provide some retaining walls in a corner there within the property just to um make a more level driveway area. Um, again, we will be using um silt fences um to control uh any potential erosion during construction, which we put just below this flat area. Uh, we will pay taking roof gutters to the storm sewer on the front and the back will have it spread um low over the backyard. And um by granting the um area variance, it will allow us uh to put a re- put the house in a reasonable position with minimizing the amount of disturbance that we have to do to the steep slope. One of the other things that they did purposely is they kept it more to the north because the neighbor are more to the south, um, this is the minimum setback, so we're um greater than the minimum setback, but we have quite a bit of spoils over this side, but um you'll see that on the survey is an edge of the lawn, the neighbor to the north has been maintaining a portion of the property, I don't know if you can pull that down just a little bit to see the property line. Uh, there we go, um, and they felt it was best to, while we could push the house up, so it's actually on some of the lawn that they maintain. We thought it was best to keep it further away, just so it wasn't on top of what they had been occupying in the past. Um, if we were to push it a little bit further uh north, we probably would have less of a severe um topography to have to deal with. Um, so looking at the criteria as far as um granting the requested variance will not be a change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties in that the neighborhood is made up of large, sanitized flames, I love the flats. The homes on this this side of the street tend to be closer to the street. When you go across the street, they're up on a hill, they're from the back, but these are are tend to be closer. I also understand that there have been a couple houses on the street that have uh received front yard variances in the past, so it's indicative of the nature of the topography that is kind of forced to bring the houses a little bit closer to the street line. And um as far as other alternatives to uh granting a variance, obviously pushing back would require more uh site work, um putting in structural fill or um super deep um puddings um so that the house is sitting in virgin soil. I've dealt with a number of homes that have been built on fill. It's always um a tough situation when it's not done properly, you have problems with settlement with cracks. Um, and you need to go into some of these in that situation like that. Um, whether um whether the question of whether it's substantial and well numerically, it's like, oh gee, we're asking for a fifth, you said variance, um actually, that's just for a small portion of the house. The main body of the house is a forty percent reduction, the garage is actually close to a thirty percent reduction. And as far as the environmental physical, the less we have to dig and disturb, uh the less uh environmental impact that there will be. And we will be taking care of stormwater, uh we'll pay a lot of attention to that um in that we are on steep sloped areas, so we have that all. So again, uh granting the variance, while any variance could be said to be self-created, we feel this is an appropriate place in this neighborhood. Place the house in any relief we can have on the front yard will make it um uh less difficult to place a house on this lot. Are there any questions that you would have?
Is is the picture there, is that like the house we're trying to build?
This is not the house itself, this is the style of house they're interested in. Obviously, this house has wings that go back and things like that, but that's the kind of type of house they would like to build, more of an estate manor type house, but it will have to be linear. Um, but that's kind of the image of the house that they'd like.
Did you submit elevations with your?
We haven't yet, we haven't designed the house because we don't know what we're allowed to have yet, but we have a footprint um in based on some generic floor plans that we feel could work. Um, thirty five feet is kind of a typical size home, you can get rooms, two rooms front and back on them. Um, a lot of the homes in the area are much more right, are much more square and deeper and all shape, but we really can't do that, we're trying to keep it linear uh to minimize how much we push it back. Once we know what we're dealing with for um for front yard setback, then we'll get a more specific design though.
If the garage is at this bottom part of the picture, what's at the top part?
Um, they had an area, um, I don't know if you wanted to explain what the thoughts were on that. Um, it was kind of a recreational space um that was in the top portion over here, is that correct though?
Um, I was going to speak at the end of all of this, but uh we hope to put, it will be an elevated structure of some form.
Name, just for the record, please.
My name is Tom Seela, and I'm married to Tara. Um, so then I'm probably the guy that ends up building the house.
So what are we trying to do with the top part of the building?
It's probably gonna be an elevated kitchen, dining room, family room type of, I I hope it looks really cool, but it's designed to be the kitchen and the dining room.
Any time, any members of the public wanna comment? You just say your name and your address.
My name is Alex Jones, I own the property five oh seven eight Bergenfield Way.
Five oh seven eight, thank you.
So I'm just learning about some of the details of 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 what they're planning to build, but I do have um significant concerns about, you know, such a substantial request for setback uh variance. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I understand why this property has to be built on this particular lot, uh, you know. It, it seems like at the time when this was initially raised, I bought the home that I lived in in twenty twenty four, and this has been put on the township docket three times, this is finally actually happening, but it was added twice before that and canceled. Uh, at that time, there, there was another lot for sale, I don't know if it's still for sale, but it was for sale, there's another house being built uh in in the development. Um, so it, it, it seems like there, there were some other opportunities to build on lots that that didn't have this challenge. Um, I do think that an additional setback like this is, is a concern, you know, for the character of the neighborhood. Um, the architect suggested there were other houses, but didn't say which ones that had received appearance, I'm not aware of that. Uh, driving the neighborhood, all the homes seem to be significantly setback from the road that would uh be the fifty percent, the fifty move foot setbacks that are are part of the town. Um, to say that a forty or thirty percent variance is not significant, doesn't with my calculations, and it is still a fifty percent variance request. Um, to me, this is a self-created hardship as well. This, these zoning requirements are not, you know, this lot was purchased when the zoning requirements were in place, this been an issue at that time, so I have those concerns that that contradict what uh was going to be done here.
In the um. In the variance paperwork, you indicate that you have letters from adjoining owners saying they're in favor of the variance.
Yes, there's forty five letters up there from the neighbors, and they were um.
Tara went top.
What's that?
I said you personally went up there.
Yes, I went to the neighbors, forty five neighbors, and.
Okay, so they're attached to the application.
They all say the same answer.
Yeah.
Well, in all due, with all due respect, they're not the next door neighbors.
Yeah, no, I just didn't see the letters initially attached, so I wanted to know if this.
I I'd like to add one more thing from, from Zoom, please, if I could. My name is Michelle Jones, I am also owner of the five oh seven eight Bergenfield Way House, can you hear me?
Yeah. Say it, you say the number again, please.
Sure.
My name, my name is Michelle Jones.
Got it.
I am also an owner at five oh seven eight Bergenfield Way. Alex made reference to the fact that this had been put before the board and then postponed and continued several times. And I just, so we are new, we are new to the neighborhood, we're new um home homeowners at five oh seven eight relatively. And so we don't, we don't have all the history, but in in speaking with the um with the board members at the last meeting where this was postponed at the last minute, I, we, we, we traveled home rapidly so we could come to that meeting, it was postponed the last minute, but what we learned was that there had been other neighbors who had written in um and asking the board to decline this petition, uh this this request for a variance or other people that had showed up at the board meetings also asking to um to decline, so I, the fact that there are letters in favor of the variance is news to me, but I also happen to know from, from speaking to the board and the a little bit of history that we do know that there are also neighbors that are not in favor of this.
Who are those neighbors?
I, I don't, I, I learned it from actually the zoning board members the last time we were here, I do not have their names.
Just so, but so, just real quick, Michelle, what I think you're referencing is that this applicant came to our board, I think it was in two thousand twenty one or two thousand twenty two, Dan may remember, and Kelly may remember. And um there was pushback from the neighbors at that meeting. Um, but that application was withdrawn at the time, we had tried to look in to see if this board could even give a variance because we went to the planning board to see if they had building envelopes that had to be with the fifty foot setback, and we did some investigation. And we determined that this board can give a variance on this if they decide to, and they go through the criteria and approve that. Um.
Okay.
Was withdrawn at that time, we didn't decide anything, we didn't approve or deny anything at the zoning board. And so it's kind of sat there until these attempts recently where it didn't end up coming through, or they didn't come to the board. Um, but that's really the history here as far as I know it.
So there were, there were, chances was listed for discussion by this body, and both times it was continued or.
Uh, if I can speak to that, I'm the reason for the.
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me do that too, let me, let me get in, I'm gonna drop. I'll, let me speak next and I'll.
Just one at a time, so Mr. Jones, you were saying?
Just in, in support of Michelle's point, this was, uh, this was listed as an agenda item twice and then canceled at the last minute. Uh, in, in uh twenty twenty four, Michelle, is that right?
Yeah, twenty twenty four.
I thought it was this year or.
Yeah, you know what, I, I take it back, I think it was like March of this year, Alex.
So too, in March, April, May, June.
March night, yeah, around early March.
It's made an application, we scheduled them, and then ultimately they decided not to, not to comment, which is fine, I mean, you can, you can do that, but and that's all he's referencing. Didn't do any wrong by, by withdrawing, but um, go here now. Sorry, Tom.
Uh, when he's done, I'll make, you said? Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments, hi, my name is Tom Seela. I am probably the guy that builds the house. Uh, let me give you some background and and fill you in. Billy Camperlino was sitting there, we just heard the comment, and here's the reason, and I appreciate, no one will speak of this, but we pulled the application back, I want to build the house with Billy's daughter Kimberly. Kimberly has a urinary retention problem. Kimberly got an external urinary diversion and is absolutely suicidal, it's a tube that into a bag, so that happened to Kim, she's a thirty five year old girl. So I pulled back the application those times because I wanted Kimberly to do this with me, that was the plan. Bill's a guy that's built more houses than anybody else, his daughter wants very much to be a builder. So it wasn't that we were trying to slip away from anything, it was simply that Kimberly was too sick to do this and her mental state is absolutely horrible, as yours would be if you were a thirty year old girl with a diversion. So that's that particular part of the story. Um, what we are trying to do, I've lived in the neighborhood for a very long time, and we are all about community and we try to build, and try to make the neighborhood value, Billy and I have done this, I've owned most of the lots on that street at one time or another with Billy and um I've built four large homes in the neighborhood. We spend an incredible amount of time and money trying to help the neighborhood. I throw the block parties every year, I invite all of my neighbors, I have many of my neighbors to lunch. If my neighbors need help, we help, uh, thought we'd speak to that. So I, no one has a greater sense of community than I do. I bought this house from Lorenz, once again, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion, Lorenz's son had died at that moment that I bought the house, so we didn't really think about the lot, yeah. And so we didn't think too much about it, we just kind of said sorry and paid him, and that was the, what we got into. What I subsequently learned is this board or some board had already cut the backside off the lot and created another lot, so there's been some work here, I think it's been done in the past, but the bottom line here is, I think you guys are absolutely great, we love the town of Dewitt, we couldn't be happier to live in Waterford. And all I'm trying to do is make this a really nice place. Uh, this is a pretty crappy lot. And if you're gonna go back down the hill, it creates a whole bunch of interesting issues, and I'm not, the problem is that if we're back down the hill, I don't know if the house can be built. We don't want to get halfway into this thing and decide it's a mess, so if we come forward, this is roughly built on a fifty foot hole, this is a mining, an overburden mining, some form of that, and I think when you built it, you took bulldozers and shoved. Uh, it was just a cut and fill operation, they put a lot of rocky soil. The closer you get to the road, the better the soil is. It's not so good if you keep going back, so what we're trying to do is bring the house forward so the foundation is solid. I don't want the house to sit fifteen feet below the road, I think it looks stupid if it comes down and back up, so I'm trying to bring the house to road level, and again, if I bring it forward, it's a lot easier to do than if I bring it, if you guys keep it at the setback. In the R zero district, you're roughly eighty feet from pavement to the front of the house. If we take twenty five feet off, we're still fifty five feet back, and it's still a pretty nice house. I don't think that we're reducing, I don't think that's gonna reduce the property values in the neighborhood, I think I'm gonna get a complaint on the other way, it drives them up and increases taxes. But we have put an immense amount of effort, Billy can speak to it, we would never do anything that would reduce the property values in Waterford. The two houses with variances, Pangeli, you guys granted Pangeli a variance almost at two ago, and uh with Scone.
Not the same, not the, no.
But it was a variance, yeah. Um.
The Scones is the one right across the street.
Yeah, and Scones is, there's this lot, an empty lot, with Scone's lot, and with Scone built the house, um.
That doesn't ring a bell, but that might have been before me.
I think that Hopkins owned it, um, yeah, Hopkins owned it, Romano owned it. Romano was the one that complained, she had variants, and I think they had front yard variants, but so it is.
Which was before, if they gave front yard setbacks in the neighborhood, it's definitely possible just before.
Yeah, and you know, one of the, the comments was that other people wanted, or we could have bought another lot. Um, Bobby, so he bought that lot out from under me, um, there's only maybe three or four undeveloped lots uh in, in the, in the sections that have been approved. Uh, one is owned by Robinson who wouldn't sell it. Aurora bought one, but there's a drainage ditch in it, and that was the issue there, you're gonna be, you got issues there that there, we couldn't settle. So there's issues on that one, Barbano owns one that goes very far back. And I think that.
And Eric Choi next to it.
And Eric Choi, and we always talk to Eric Choi a year or so. Uh, so there isn't a plethora of alternative sites, and the ones that exist, they're all challenged anyway, so again, all I, this is super cool, it's a great neighborhood, the house is gonna be a huge credit, and the final piece of the puzzle, and as long as I'm standing here, I might as well say it, is her grandmother needs a place to live. Her grandmother is ninety years old, Tara drives almost every single day, forty five minutes to Auburn to see her grandmother, forty five minutes back. And our thought process was, we wanted grandma to live in the neighborhood, we think grandma will be a, a credit, she'll build some of the community, make it a cook dinner, she hasn't realized that one yet. Uh, but it's a tremendous story, Tara is as devoted as you could be as a granddaughter. And we'd like to move grandma here, this is.
And she's only getting older, and it'll be harder to take care of forty five minutes away as if she was literally right across the street.
It's a really cool project in total, and if you don't grant the variance, it makes it uncertain as to whether or not we can build a house, I honestly do not know. Um, we talked about this, we talked about it with engineers. Um, I just don't know, and we're not, we're not gonna take a chance to get to something half built, this makes this a really nice way to do it, alternatively, maybe you could put a small house on the lot, but I built four very large homes on Bergenfield. I don't want to do anything to destroy the character, and I want to build the same, I want to build. I want to build another really cool house and this will be, some form of that will look really nice at the end of the day. So I'm just asking you help. You guys have been great. Waterford's simply the greatest neighborhood in the world. We love the town of Duett. We're excited. We want to build the community spirit. We think this does nothing but help. We need your help. This this, the terrain and all this, all these these lots are shitty, for lack of a better term and we need it, we need help. We need a favor on this one and we hope to return it with an incredibly we just want to do something that's really special, a great story. And if you guys can see your way clear to help us navigate the terrain. The other ti- the other comment is that if we don't do this, who's gonna build on that lot? Not a whole lot of people. It's been sitting there twenty five years, twenty years now. For sure, section four.
Well, is it my turn to talk or am I?
Oh, you don't do you, Billy.
Are you done?
Oh, you don't. Hey, guys, what's good? Fabulous town and thank you so much for all the great things that Duett brings to our lives.
I'm Bill Camperlino. I'll be a little less emotional. I'm the developer of this track. I've owned it for over thirty five years. Um I've been involved in the construction and development of thousands of homes and lots in central New York. And probably at least a dozen different towns and villages. So I've got, I've had a little bit of experience and this is my flagship, no doubt about it. I disagree with Tom. They aren't crummy lots. They're wonderful lots. That's why people are willing to spend millions of dollars to live there. They've got great views, great terrain, but they're all challenging to build on. Most of them are challenging. Most of the people that live there have lived up to the challenge. They've done a great job. I've had compliments from many people on Waterford Woods and it's certainly one of the top neighborhoods in town. Um one of the things I do agree with Tom on is to set the house back would require it to be set down. And I'd much rather have it up closer to the road than down in a hole. Never looks good when it's sitting in a hole. And I don't, I'm positive that it would not have any negative effect on anybody's property values in Waterford Woods. Um in all my years and I've been in in this business for over fifty years, I've never heard anybody say, gee, I'm not moving into this neighborhood because that house has a variance. It's just never happened. And it's not gonna happen here because these lots are uh the the frontages on them are twice as big as most lots in the town of Duett, at least twice as big. So it makes up for the differences and maybe setbacks, sideline requirements and those kind of things. So I think it'd be an asset to the neighborhood to build this house. Tom does a great job aesthetically. He puts a lot of time into it. He forgot to mention he has a fourteen thousand square foot house right now across the street from it. If if anybody's uh value would be affected, it would be his first. It's the biggest, it's one of the biggest houses in Waterford Woods. And he's been, he's owned it for what, twenty years?
Yeah.
So he's been there twenty years. He's not a newcomer. He's not coming in to uh be a robber baron. He's coming in, he he's sincere and wanting to improve the neighborhood. Sure of that. And I don't, it's not gonna hurt the the values of anybody. If anything, if it gets pushed back, it's gonna affect the neighbors behind this lot way more than it'll affect any neighbors in the front of of the property that's towards the street.
And size and judge size uh
Because it falls down extremely um towards the back. And you'd have to clear out all the trees. It'd be immense grading. There'd be way more bill being brought into that site than I'd like to see. And probably most of the neighborhoods wouldn't want to see that kind of bill. And you'd have to bring China wall back there. It would be the dominant feature of the houses from the lower street looking up. So I think moving it towards the front makes all the sense in the world aesthetically and to blend into the neighborhood in the best way possible. So my opinion.
Say something.
Should we?
Town logo.
Address?
L O E B E L. Uh address uh five oh eight seven, you said five oh seven eight?
Yeah.
Okay, that, yeah, you threw me off with that one. Five oh eight seven Bergenfield.
Yep.
So I'm three houses down from Tom and I am diagonal from this lot. So I'm one of the newer people in the neighborhood. Um I built my house during COVID. Heck of an experience that was. And I'm on the other side of the street, so I have the exact opposite problem that Tom's talking about. We had to dig and dig and put walls in, truck dirt out. It was, you know, like everybody's been saying, challenging. I'm not an architect. Um so I'm not speaking to that stuff, but I will look at this house probably daily. I have a view right from my house. Um I know this lot because I looked at it. I walked it. I considered maybe even trying to buy it before I bought my lot. Sorry, Tom, I didn't want it. It's okay. So, you know, I
Nobody would.
I I know the lot. I know it would have been hard to build. I didn't wanna, you know, buy the lot and you just have to put, you know, shed on it or something. So I understand the challenges, um but as not only someone in the neighborhood, but somebody who's like right there across the street diagonal. Uh just wanted to voice my support and as a homeowner across the street, I have absolutely no issues with this being closer to the road. But the architects deal with the technical threats of it. But I I know Tom and Karen, there's no way they're gonna put a uh unsightly house that's not gonna fit with the neighborhood. There's no way it's gonna drag down any property values and can't imagine anybody complaining about size, style. Anything aesthetic. So just wanted to voice my support forth.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Bobby Aurora. And I live at fifty one hundred Waterford Woodway. I used to live in Cistro when I moved down there in two thousand sixteen. And after even probably less than a year, I extended my house. Even my youngest one, he goes to CPA and we all love it. If any law comes in tomorrow, I'll probably be the first one to buy it. It's a great neighborhood. And uh he these people are the best people in the neighborhood. Would like to see him having a house beautiful possible. Absolutely no problem.
Hi, my name is Aya Aurora. I'm sixteen year old. I'm in high school still, go to CPA. And uh I've lived in this neighborhood for around seven, eight years now. And I love this neighborhood more than anything. I go to different neighborhoods. I don't feel the vibe and thoughts of energy as our neighborhood. And I know uh Sir Sean here, he will build a nice house because he has the best house in the neighborhood. Best looking house in my community. And he does care about the neighborhood. And I think moving this house up twenty five feet will help the architecture and the pattern of the neighborhood will help. And also her grandmother lives there, which is better for her. So she has less maintenance headaches and uh it's easier for her, you know, as to live there. And uh I have no issues with them moving the house up twenty five.
Like this gonna make it more neighborhood, more beautiful. Every time I walk in there, I see the right right houses all 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 done. And you just look at the website. I was there two days back. I mean, I didn't even walk for like a less than a like few seconds. And I could see the steep going down. So definitely I feel it. Being a layman, this house need to be brought more in, so it's gonna look very, very good.
Good evening, Tom Coy. I'm using Rollins. Can we go back to the site plan real quick? We actually did the survey work for the property. Just wanna point out a couple of things that I just wanna reiterate to the board. If you can zoom out to sort
Oh, sorry. I thought I was helping.
No, you're totally, totally fine. Um Tom touched on it for just a second, just to reiterate, part of the property was already taken. So this strip over here was part of the adjacent property or was part of this site and was taken from the site before Tom uh purchased it. The other thing, you know, and the neighbors should consider as far as when you push a house back on something with this type of slope, you're gonna have to reduce the value of the overall home just to build. So keep in mind that even though, yes, you're getting a house that's close to the road, you're gonna get a better house closer to the road. Versus pushing it way back, you're definitely gonna have to shrink the house. It's gonna affect the values of the neighboring properties a lot more by being a much smaller house, a cheaper house and just because of the site costs. And again, I think that would have much more of a detriment to the neighborhood than it would keeping something up close like this um. But I just want to point that out specifically that you can't really push it too much farther back. You are gonna have to slide up to the north if you push it back to that bit. Thank you.
Looking forward to discussion?
It's great to see the level of support, but at the end of the day, thirty five feet is, ooh, not that much. I mean, I understand all of it. Twenty five feet from the road?
No, it's fifty five feet from the road.
The setback or the
See, you minus twenty five.
It's substantial. It it's probably the biggest we've seen.
We did, I was remembering one. Did they want a coronation circle? I'm thinking right now. Is that nearby this, right circle? That's right nearby, right? I think we did one.
Bergenfield Road to the coronation.
April eighteenth, twenty twenty two. And they got fifteen feet, they got fifteen feet of fifty. In that case, that board proved that. That helps the board at all. They're twenty five. They're asking for twenty five feet. I think at in that case, if I recall correctly, they came in requesting the same request. They requested they had a fifty and they wanted twenty five and there was some bargaining and then they said that fifteen, they could do what they wanted with fifteen. And that was it. So I think it's three helps at all. I don't know if there's any room, so. I would not be twenty five, but I don't know that, I don't know.
If we push it north, again, they they kept it to the south just to respect the Jones's encroachment of the lawn and not push it closer, but we can push it further north than maybe we could um deal with a fifteen foot variance as opposed to a twenty five foot setback.
This board's looking at the minimum, right? The minimum that they can grant. So if there is room to have that not be twenty five, I think this board
Yeah, we
We interested in hearing that.
But if if we push it, if we push it north, we can push it back. So let's say, you know, we we could accept a thirty five foot setback if we end up pushing it north and have a net safe effect.
Does that satisfy the neighborhood concerns, which fifteen be acceptable to you?
Well, so I mean, one of the concerns I have is this discussion about a raised part of the property or raised part of the structure that is on the 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 boundary with with the home um on and our home. So if that, you know, creates a I I don't, I don't know what it's gonna look like, but you know, part of the reason for setbacks is so that you have sightlines when you're talking about you know, trying to enter and exit the the drive, the drive curves. So, you know, to have a raised structure there could could be a challenging um.
Would it help? Would it help if we went? In in other words, can we move this up a little bit? I thought computer guess uh. No, the other way, the other way. If we brought this to the, what I ideally would like is to bring it this way, bring a driveway and put the parking in back. If we could do that, we'd come further away from his house. Would that help? Then there's no front yard driveway. Would that be better?
No. It works against you.
Well, I won't have that out.
You build, I'll design.
If we can push this so I can see the upper part. Yeah, so if I can see it. Okay, if if I push this up, I can push it back. Okay. What I have is six fourteen, this is six fifteen, this is six fourteen. Again, it's slightly below and and that's what I'm fighting because we don't want this so far below you're going down into the house. If if I push this up, so maybe let's say I'm, you know, twenty five or thirty feet from the property line, I can push it back another ten feet and have the net. And and now I'm working in a more gradual area as opposed to the steeper area over here. So that helps.
That was seems, so that's what we've done before, fifteen?
Yeah, but I think the board would like to probably see it. Right? And they probably like to see it on a scale
Right.
Survey so they can look at it and approve what's being asked for. I think it's hard for the board to be ready to approve something. Um
I agree.
Without without seeing it.
Well, why don't we give you another um
Drawing.
Drawing that would show the
As this board can table this for now, you can not make a decision. You can submit uh what we're talking about, some other option that the sport can consider and then it can continue the next time.
We'll try to get it to you within the next two weeks.
And we'll keep you on it. If there's a problem, there's a delay, then it's always helpful.
Can I, can I just jump in here with one more question? Um if if that's the case, will there be another public hearing? Um will it, will the public have an opportunity to 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 look at this?
So we're not gonna close the public hearing. We're gonna keep it open. For the next time, we'll notice everybody that they're coming back and then it'll just be like we resumed this right here.
Uh okay, okay. And and so, I mean, it was, it was really kind of you guys to ask Alex's opinion. Um and so if, and I understand it's not exactly a negotiation, but but if that's the case, like, you know, he's a smart guy. We're scientists, but we're not builders. So if like, if we could have an opportunity to to think about it, if our, if 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 the board would like to, you know, take our input, I wouldn't, I we wouldn't mind and we're not gonna like change the design or anything. We we just wanted an opportunity to look at it besides um not not gold and I can't even see it, so.
No, you you'll be able to comment uh at the next, at the next one. It's your your chance to comment is not over at this board table.
Come here, dinner at our house and we're happy to chat with you about it.
Well, Alex is there most of the time by himself, so you guys can set up something.
I'm I'm good with the i- with the idea too that they want input, they want to know, they want to understand. I think, and and I don't think we did a really good job preparing for this by any means. I think we did a really bad job. I think people don't it it to make decisions, more information should have been there. I think we could have been better. I think we could have met with a couple of the people. We knew well. And and again, this was, I was gonna do this with Kim and Kim got sick. And so it's, we're pretty disheveled on that. But bottom line is, if if talking to us helps, after another house, we're we're happy to talk.
It's a long-term project, it looks like, so.
Yeah, yeah, able to run, I don't think is Oh, I I don't, it's certainly gonna be at least that. It's, there's no super rush. What we're looking for is if you tell us Well, if you tell us what the house, where we can put the house, then we can finish the design. And that's sort of what we're hoping for is give us a a window or an envelope and then we'll finish the design. I don't think this is actually gonna get built next year. It's awfully late in the year to with all the stuff that has to go into planning, so um I'm hopeful and again, Kimmy's still sick, so God knows what she's gonna do.
All the sport is thinking is we're looking to, if we are gonna approve, if the board is gonna approve something, we'd like it to be the minimum that helps.
Sure.
So I'm hearing that there is still some
Some room.
To get to that.
I'm happy to work with people and as I said, if people want understanding or input, please call and have dinner at our house. We're just if the more we explain, we want to be good neighbors. We want everybody to be happy Waterford and it would have been great to us. So we don't want to cause trouble. We want to just say, hey, what's your concern? What's your problem? Maybe we can solve it. Maybe you solve some of ours. We don't think we're the most brilliant people. We're just kind of making our way. So this sort of fell in my lap to build, so.
Motion to table, everybody?
Motion to table, please.
And I, I just wanted to address Alex's one, the neighbor's one concern, specifically about the house being pulled forward, site distances and sightlines and everything. Thirty five, twenty five, thirty five B is a very normal building setback and a lot of subdivisions around on that county. We do subdivisions all over the county. Twenty five, thirty five is very similar and very compliant to most subdivision regulations in the county. So if the house is pushed up, you're not gonna have any site distance issues. You're not gonna have any sightline issues. And again, it's not uncommon to have a house that close to the road throughout the county. It's just that this subdivision specifically has a fifty foot uh front yard setback because of the way it was designed originally. Most subdivisions have a much closer front yard setback. Most houses are closer to the road specifically at this distance. So I don't want you to think that it's uncommon to have a house that close to the road.
Just uncommon in this subdivision.
Just a little, just uncommon in this subdivision.
But that's
That's, that's great. Thank you.
Probably agree, it's not a regular Duett neighborhood, it's one of the nicer neighborhoods, yeah, so.
Okay, well, let's make a motion.
Are we able to access these documents or are those not available?
Yeah, you can go on. You can go on, um, Civic Plus, do it, and, um, call us if you have trouble, but you should be able to peace drop your weight, it's all public.
If you can.
This, this is all public.
Follow us, we'll give you angles, this phone number, he'll send it to you, no problem.
So we're not trying to hide anything. Motion, if you want it, it's in a second.
Yeah.
A second from Jamie. Call a favor? Suppose, staying, this public hearing is tabled, but will remain open for future public comment.
Thank you, folks.
Public hearing open, you got that, public hearing open?
Okay, um, so our next application is the Duncan on.
Six five oh four Thompson. Mission here for, uh. And they say they're coming by Zoom?
I assumed that Fulton would appear. Well, why don't we go to the next one and come back? I mean, this is gonna do, put them in a really bad spot. They were told when I sent them, we're planning for an agenda that if they did not, if there are people here, to take it over. Or planning for.
Yeah, yeah.
You did, and they built it to, um.
Yeah.
Not to what?
There are one more.
This board approves them, you have the six-foot monument design because of the Tyos, not the Pope. They built it at eight feet, instead of the six feet that was approved.
Now, they want, right, no, variance, two, not be too much is for eight points.
So, well, if we were to deny it, they took them aside.
If you were to deny it, the planning board's recommendation, um, is. They would request that they lower.
The sign, the sign to what was originally permitted.
Correct.
Then, then the variance, right?
Sounds like they're not here, which is surprising, different what you're talking about, so.
Do you think maybe something, we have a way to contact them, or?
Or call Terry?
Terry's not, Terry appeared only one meeting, Fulton has been, Fulton Raines is the one who's been taking lead, coming to all the meetings.
He's about to get cooked by his boss.
Right.
What, four K?
Well.
It's what it is, I mean.
I think they're a little less concerned because they did get their approval to do their facade.
Okay, so maybe we just, um. Okay, well, until next time, and contact them, and maybe they'll come next time, now we'll take it off. That sounded good to the board, that sounded reasonable.
That's fine.
Everyone wanna move on to the last case here?
Yes.
Anybody in the office interested, or in the audience interested in this case besides, which one, Christian?
Three one eight.
Three one eight oh?
Yeah.
Ear Boulevard, alright, I'm gonna read the notice. If I can find it. Notice is hereby given pursuant to section two sixty-seven A of the New York State law, and a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Center of the Wip. New York at the town offices, fifty-four hundred Martin Drive, East Syracuse, New York, on Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at six forty-five P M. To consider the application of Grazi's ZAR, received by the Dwort Town Court on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Concerning the premises situated at three one eight oh, Ear Boulevard East, taxman parcel ID zero four four zero six zero eight zero. Three one eight oh, Ear Boulevard LLC owner, in a business zoning district, specifically requested by the applicant. One area variance of eight feet, two inches to allow for building height of eighteen feet, four inches, with the Dwort Town Code, section one ninety-two dash fifty H. Allows for a maximum building height of ten feet, two inches, and two, an area variance of twelve parking spaces to allow for total parking space count. Sixty-four parking spaces with the Dwort Town Code, section one ninety-two dash one oh three B, requires available of seventy-six parking spaces. And for such additional relief as may be necessary or appropriate, stated November sixth, twenty twenty-five. And just briefly, for the purposes of secret, the town is declaring lead agency, this is an unlisted action for commercial area variance. And no native environmental impact associated with this action. Christian, it's all you.
Hello, members of the ZB, thanks for having me. Yeah, layout plan would be great, Christian Freeman, Kepler and Freeman Associates. Um, this site currently is, uh, an abandoned Tokyo soul building. Um, you're imagining it Smith, the red building, as you're flying by there, Sonic's on the other side. And, uh, maybe I'll use the word dilapidated, disheveled, forgotten, or unvivacious, you take your pick. Um, so thi- this, this site needs a little bit of love, um, Smith's here to make sure that we're, we're gonna look good as a neighbor.
Mr. Smith, I thought I recognized you, that's why I knew I heard.
But, um, yeah, Grazi's is our vision here, is that we have two restaurant tenants for a four thousand five hundred square foot building, it's split the building, shared wall in the middle. And then the parking would be shared as well between the two tenants. Um, what we had discussions early on about was building location, and we tried quite hard to get our building closer to Ear Boulevard to. You know, cuz that was seen as an advantage, and stick the parking behind, it's gonna help with the aesthetic way out of the site. Unfortunately, there's overhead transmission lines, and I don't wanna disparage whoever built it, but they built illegally in the easement. The building currently is under high voltage lines, illegal, not allowable at all, and so National Grid, I called them up and said, you ever issue? You know, a, a building permit for some kind of construction under it, and they said, never, ever. Where are you talking about, I showed them this, then we dug up, uh, Forest Segway did a great job for us, he dug out the easement information. And we determined there's an easement that's right across the front of the building, uh, would you mind going to page, I think it's three or four, one more? Uh, there we go. Yeah, this is it, so right here, I have dashed in, and I called it out louder on my newest set of drawings, but that's that easement there. And, and so that, oh, E X O E line there, that's that existing overhead electric.
Okay, you care before?
The, uh, the front vestibule was a, a patch on. It was in there, so, um, so unfortunately, we had to pull a building back. Um, and what that does for us is, in order to get the parking and to kinda support this, um, at this size. Uh, it's, it's such that our building, instead of being here, or maybe, you know, with lies here with parking behind. It, it has to be pushed back, and that unfortunately kinda squeezes us into a variance without going to the smaller building. Um, so we're ten foot two from the property line there, and notice our neighbor's quite close to the property as well. Um, what we'd like to do is, as you can see, I have this green hatch all around, we've made it a goal early on this one to. Try and kinda do Lord's work and add some green back to Ear Boulevard instead of going the other way, um.
Do anything to that right now, it's going.
Right, I mean, new curbs, new payment, all that's gonna be a million bucks right out the gate, but the green enough's gonna help a lot, we're, we're relieving about quarter. Or we're adding about a quarter of greenery back in, um, dumpsters behind the building, lays out kinda nice, um, for two uses now. And then all signage, and, you know, this will, will be like a true face of the building going out that way. Um, so yeah, the two variances are, um, I have the plan here that shows that we had a discussion. Uh, internally, I was out, but what we had done is we ran some dimension lines, I'll just kinda take this right to left. That show the property line in, and instead of what I had initially suggested, the variance is actually quite smaller because. Building height is an average, and our architect didn't give us a true number, and we're only really getting a small triangle of variance space. At there, versus, because it's canted, right?
Are the numbers I have correct?
Yes, yeah, I believe you guys are right.
Okay.
So we only, and this is what the town panel are, it's also saying is only a quarter of the building exceeds the.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, it's.
That's what you're showing.
Yeah, so that's my lethal prime right now, without your help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the parking?
Most spots.
The spots.
Reduction.
Yep.
Yeah, so, um, we looked at it initially, and you know, this is a dollars and cents question. We can have a smaller building and have the, the greater parking. Grazi spoke with planning, you know, we'd like to make this a discussion with you too, and not just say they said so. But they said, you know, you get over fifty spots and you get it to balance as close as you can, and, you know, we'd like to, like to make this project happen. So I'd like to ask you guys to give us a little leniency here, the tenants, um, will actually suit the parking. One of the tenants that I know is going in there will actually suit the, um, the reduction quite a lot, I know you guys don't issue it based on you specifically, but. It'd be more of a grab and go, um, counter service deli style restaurant versus a sit-down. I, I think there was my big question too, and you don't have to tell us if you're gonna move in, but if in terms of restaurants, we're talking about high traffic. Yeah. That makes a big difference than someone who's gonna park the car for an hour and a half. That's, that's kinda, that's where I'm going with one of the tenants, I can speak to that for sure, the other one I can't, but for one of them, yeah, you, you're gonna get some, you know, people be in and out. Two tenants, yep.
You know, just like, I do with restaurants.
Um, we're going for an approval with both, both restaurants, and another restaurant is being discussed currently, so we're trying. And twelve spots is a lot. Yes. So just so, I mean, I, I'm, is there any way we could get it down to seven or eight, or is that? I'd love to, uh, not without, you know, some double parking and getting, getting really crazy, this is, this is several, several plans of. And in iterations of reworking layout, and, you know, we are doing some other things for the town. Um, so this entrance is existing, this entrance was existing, we're gonna remove it, clear it up, so you get some greenery there. You know, we, we could have done some kinda interesting loop models here. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I can live with twelve, but I, I just, it's a significant. I'd be interested in hearing about it, but it doesn't, yeah, it seemed like this is a good use of. Of spots, so.
I, I like the, what they've done, and I, I can see it's tight, so I don't see any extra.
I don't think you would bring in tenants that would cause this to overflow.
I don't think, and it's.
Parking, right, the planning board wouldn't approve.
Would, yeah, move in there with, with a, you know, restricted parking, that, that had a high flow, you know.
Well, cuz really, it's.
No, it's two, it's two restaurants.
Well, it's two restaurants, but it's one sit-down restaurant.
Right.
In theory, they're saying the second place is.
Oh, I don't, I couldn't tell you what it is, I couldn't tell you what it is.
Place, though, is a, a, a grabbing go, you're saying.
It, it's more like, uh, I, I would say like deli style, so there's like a, there's like a counter and maybe.
Subway?
Sort of, yeah, 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 maybe like Chipotle style, where you say, give me that, give me that, give me that, give me that, you know, people aren't in a Chipotle forever, or, they're kinda in and out.
I mean, also, that could make it really busy. Like, that's like the way do what eats.
If you have one of them, a Shake Shack or something like that, I think it's a bad idea, but I don't think that's what they're talking about.
The one that's on the hook is not a national chain either.
So you see the Chick-fil-A, Chick-Check, I bring in a lot, a lot of people.
If it's a national chain, it's not one that I. But you don't leave, uh, parking spaces for that, because there, there's a lot of turn up, but if, if you have something that's, um.
Steakhouse.
Yeah, and they're gonna sit there. Well, I'll say another thing too, I mean, you know, we don't have on here is a drive-through, we don't have room, but also.
Oh, right.
That, that's, that's kind of a, a blessing as far as traffic goes, as far as congestion goes, and as far as parking goes.
That would be a weird place to have a traffic.
We're like, we're like ants, people are, we, we see the cars stacked up in the Chick-fil-A and people are still running.
I mean, hopefully, anyone who goes into that area is gonna have some kind of variance.
There's no restaurants on either side, right, there's a. This is a Sonic, yeah. So if someone were to, it was all full up, and they couldn't, and see if it was a parking Sonic and walk over. Theoretically, and the county actually issued a comment of, you know, probably should bring this up, but the county actually issued a comment, it said. You should, you should have the lots, you should have access from here to here and here to here, and I don't, I actually don't think that's in the town's best interest. I think the town wants us to be greener, I think you want another tree, for the love of God, let me put my tree here. I agree, and it's not the intent, I mean, you get a traffic planner, they're not gonna say, you know, everyone should have back access behind the buildings. What is this, a giant strip mall?
Malcolm, you have any comments as?
My comment is, I'd love to get this thing going.
We've been talking for a couple of years now, Malcolm.
I've been, my fingers crossed, but I, I, I'm sort of wedged into. It's such a nice story, especially, you know, I just can't believe it's done, a lot to stand this.
Yeah, we couldn't do anything to it, I, I wish you, hope you even believe me, it's not allowed, we can do.
Just telling you guys, give this guy approval.
You don't mind the corners?
That'd be any department.
You don't mind the corner being that close to your. Don't mind.
It's happy for some progress.
Give me, give me, okay, put it on us, put it on a. It's really, it's costing us a lot of business. Yeah, I sold my business to a new owner, she kept complaining bitterly, homeless coming there and breaking me in, and, you know, getting. Drugs in the front.
Dead deer carcass sitting there for.
I'm sorry?
Deer, I forgot about that.
No, they got rid of that.
Actually, we had to go get rid of it.
I mean, but it's, she's a woman, and she's, she comes in the morning, there's, there's people that are laying down in the driveway. Yeah, we had a call and handcuffs one day, take somebody out, so it's just, needs to be cleaned up, it's a, it's an eyesore for the town to win. I'm just surprised that the town hasn't moved to say, hey, tear this thing down.
And we'll make a, a motion to approve, uh, the first.
Eight feet, two inches for a building height of, uh, eighteen feet, four inches.
One second.
Okay, one second. Motion by Max, second by Al. Will prove variance request of eight feet, two inches for a total building height of eighteen feet, four inches. Um, let's go through the criteria, is undesirable change produced and character of the neighborhood, that translates me about properties.
Especially since they're adding more green.
So some other method feasible for the envelope to pursue other than a variance?
No.
Is there a substantial?
Um, spots is a lot.
I think it is, because it's one quarter.
It's also, the, the copper top.
Right, about height, yeah.
We're like two buildings down, so.
And I think it looks good.
The copper top one, though, I think was because there was a really wide right away there. It was a hot, yeah, anyway, it was a peak, that one was a little bit hot, this, that is pretty significant, having a corner of a building that's low streeter. Yeah, that's, that's pretty significant, I mean, it's sure it's only one corner, but if you were to go stand at the end, you know, that's not property and look up.
So now, close the building is to the side property line, to the property?
Yeah, they're close, but it is, so this.
With firewalls for.
This is. And the, uh, the hatch, the crosshatches the.
Will there be an adverse effect or impactful physical or environmental conditions?
No.
Yes, this is the.
Self-created, yes. Motion by Max, second by Kelly, who approved the variance, eight feet, two inches for total building height of eighteen, four inches. All for vote, member Delaposta.
Yes.
Member Aaron.
Yes.
Member Truvat.
Yes.
Um, Flash Chair Cornfeld.
Yes.
Uh, Chairperson O'Connor.
Yes.
That one glasses, and then secondly, we have the parking variance, there are motions.
I'll make a motion, uh, for really quick, twelve space.
All right, Jamie, second.
I'll start.
Second by Joe. Will prove parking space reduction, twelve spaces, total parking space count, sixty-four spaces. Now, above the criteria, there, there, uh, undesirable change produced in the neighborhood or the neighborhood properties created.
No, it's never.
Some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue, whether they're variance.
No, well, yeah, yes, they could build a building smaller, they themselves said it, but they don't want to.
And build a small building and allow a little more room for parking, is that right, Max?
Yeah.
Feel like a lie to not say.
And it was, and he said it himself, like, we could do this instead. But we don't want.
But we could go with song and not.
It's a requirement there is substantial.
Yes.
Adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Self-created? Okay, motion by Jamie, second by Joe, the reduction of twelve spaces for total space count of sixty-four, uh, all for vote, member Delaposta.
Uh, yes.
Member Perrin.
Yes.
Member Truvat.
Yes.
Flash Chair Cornfeld.
Yes.
Chairperson O'Connor.
Yes.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, great night. Malcolm, we finally made it, soon, new building soon.
Wait till I see the bull notes.
I'm glad, I'm glad that finally Malcolm. Okay, take care, man, I always put Kelly in there.
Okay.
Man, nice to see you.
Malcolm, I'm glad that I have some good news for you this time, I don't.
Thank you.
And some, uh, excuses for you.
Congratulations, Christian, this is a baby.
Oh, thank you, please help you.
Go.
Oh, nice, thank you.
Uh, me and.
Hi. Julie, what would I do without you, Julie?